Thank you.
Uh, the approval of previous minutes, meeting minutes.
Is that September? Are they reading again, or just no?
Just look over and see if you're per-
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the September fifteenth meeting of the Morgan County Water District Board meeting.
I second.
Motion been made in property's second to approve the meetings, uh, minutes from September. Any further discussion on it? All in favor?
Uh.
All opposed? Next is, uh, approval of bills or written checks.
Hi, um, what's this about on September the fifteenth from Antimble Crossway Shield?
We had, we had paid, had paid the bill.
Uh-huh.
And that was during the renewal process. And we had, they sent us, refunded us that check back.
Mm-hmm.
Then you'll see where we roll in another check.
Okay. It said A R H, so I didn't know.
Huh?
It says it's pulling through A R.
A C H.
A C H. That was a test for me, wasn't it Donna?
Yeah, yeah, those are just senior kind of kids.
Nice man, I try my best.
Oh, the tank cleaning there. Andy, the tank cleaning, is everything okay with the tanks for us?
Donna, no thank you, no. Uh, no thank you.
No, thank you, no.
Good.
But we don't get calls no more.
That is a wonderful thing, that is a wonderful thing.
So we now have them paid off.
Who?
Uh, the tank.
Oh, okay, good. That's good.
The tank, tank cleaning's paid off.
What is, uh, West Liberty Utilities?
Uh, city, where we buy water off of.
Okay.
It says includes all the leaks.
That's what we paid for all the leaks clearly.
Yeah. Jumped up there.
Had quite a few leaks.
I'd reckon.
I'd say around thirty thousand more than what it normally is.
Is that from all the breaks and stuff we had there?
On ten fifteen, there was a debit come out for the post office, it says late bill in stance. Was our, our post office box late or something, or?
Late bills stance.
No, late bills.
Late bills stance.
Oh, late bills, okay, sorry.
I need a motion to approve the bills or written checks.
Ellen's still looking, I think.
She's a teacher, she's great.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the payments and of the bills, the checks that was ready for, from September the tenth to October the fifteenth. I'll second.
Motion made in property's second to approve, uh, bills or written checks, all in favor?
Uh.
All opposed? As have it. Uh, finance, Brenda?
Thank you ma'am. I'm Brenda.
So, um, what you have here is, uh, shows you what's in the bank accounts as of September thirty, okay? And, um, then after that's the income and expenses for the month of September, and then the year to date. So that forces January through September.
So?
Twenty one.
And, you know, just a couple things on the bank account.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there's a grant came in that went into the, uh, payroll one ninety one account. So that's what that, that money is. And that exact same amount is sitting in other income, is grant money. And I was, uh, explaining to, um, Donna and, uh, Anna that the, what's sitting in the payroll account, that's each payroll, money gets transferred from the, um, over into the payroll account to pay the upcoming payroll and cover all the taxes. So that money sitting there at September thirtieth is pretty much our exposure for. Cause it was for all the, like, Kentucky retirement and all the quarterly taxes coming through in, um, October. So all payroll taxes and the subsidies, all that stuff's up today, everything's, you know, filed, there's nothing behind on that.
Could you say that a little louder for those in the back? I'm real proud of that.
Sounds lax from her.
It's nice to hear Brenda.
Thank you, Chris.
And, uh, I will say, like, when you look at the last page, um, you know, the income that's showing on there, that's with, um, you know, all grant and loan proceeds. Uh, but it also shows, um, loan payments made too, that's included. You know, cause at the end of the year, when you fix your balance sheet, you know, principal payments don't go on this, and loan proceeds don't go on this. But I did it like this so you can see all the money coming in and everywhere it went. So that's why you'll see the, the loan payments, uh, going out, and then the, um, like I say, there's loan proceeds coming in, and then, um, grant proceeds.
What is the reimbursement of fifty dollars?
Well, I don't know, I'm sure I'll tell my head, but, um,
What is it? Four? Oh.
And anything like that on any of these details, um, you know, uh, me or Anna can go in and, you know, give you details of every check written out. So if you come up with any questions later, you can always just email me and, you know.
Ma'am, even though, like, this shows here.
That's what I was wondering for.
What are you looking for Donna?
Fifty dollars.
It's, uh-
It's on the second page.
Second page.
Oh, okay, that's, that's in the year to date. Yeah, it's in the year to date.
It's on the third page too.
It's on the third page too. It's on the third page as well. Isn't that what you said, Chris, third page? Yeah, reimbursements, yep.
So that's the same fifty dollars?
It is.
No, no, it's two different account numbers.
Right.
So, so, under, um, like, there's a reimbursement, you know, under the, you know, within the income, and then you got the fifty dollars that, um, you know, that went out on the, the fifty dollars account on six oh four one nine, the sum, something between January first and September thirtieth. Yeah, that's the same one as-
Right, it didn't happen this-
Well, it would've been between January and August thirtieth.
Yes, exactly, it didn't happen this month, it had been in that, oh, there, yes, yes.
So the six oh four-
The reimbursements, can we get like a, y'all doing reimbursements, can we get something like, tells what exactly we got reimbursed? Reimb- reimbursement scares us actually.
Yeah.
The six oh four, yeah, it, it looks to me like it's something to do with payroll or pensions or something.
Uh, which one did you say? Where you?
Whoever it goes.
Did you say s-
I want, I don't want, you know, I ain't gonna say it, but, you know, I'd just like to have what, what's for.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure it's just like-
No, I don't. I was thinking ten more.
I would know too.
I will get on, we're gonna put some money in the pocket and send you all an email once you know what it's for.
Okay.
It's usually our right hand or foot of the district to try to put, what we're dealing.
So Donna, let me ask you a question, even though, I mean, it shows what money we have in the accounts and stuff, we still have those notes that's coming up in January, right?
Mm-hmm.
Or at the end of the year, I guess, so to speak.
We got one coming up December first, the big one is January first.
And how much are they exactly?
I don't know exactly, I mean-
Well, not exactly.
Is, it'll be over a hundred thousand.
Yeah, I was thinking it was over-
I think last, last year's was like a hundred and nine.
Yeah.
So it'll, it'll probably be around that.
And that's the ones we're gonna try to pay off?
Uh?
That's the ones we're gonna try to pay off?
Oh, no, we'll be paying on that for-
So I'm gonna throw one?
Yes.
Yeah. You're talking about the one that, that, uh, the K I A loan?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
That we're wanting to take some of that grant money? That we haven't let go or paid towards yet.
We still haven't heard about the grant money, we don't.
Jocelyn has come up and went through all the invoices that we're hoping to pay, but we haven't heard anything since.
Did she reject anything on the invoices? Said we couldn't pay? Good.
She, she went through the list of what we could pay and what we couldn't pay, but everything, all the basis, good answer has been submitted to the P S A.
Brains.
And we're gonna put it towards-
We'll probably, yeah, I don't-
Towards something, I don't remember what's on that.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Brenda.
She got approval.
What?
No, we have to have approval to accept. Financial report.
The way this was broke down, these were all six oh four.
Okay, right.
So what I printed off gives you each month. These shares could be, or somebody went to a training.
That's what I thought was training.
What we've done so far.
Yeah.
If we asked you to sign this up for that training, they say we're yet.
We need to prove that.
That's what I was wanting to, to talk about.
When you-
Because we need that deadline, it's November tenth. And, uh, it's probably the same day we're gonna have our next board meeting.
What day?
Well, that's the deadline to get it.
Yeah, this is the deadline to register, cause I, I wanna get it in as soon as I can, I just need a hand count. I think we're all-
All of us.
Cause it's seventy five dollars a person.
Mm-hmm.
So.
And that's not being really bad.
And we gotta just go one day.
Oh, I mean, decent, sorry.
We all decided on the second, didn't we?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. The six airs, y'all just wanna do the six airs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause it's a twelve air, if you go and do both of those.
So Donna, how's the bank account look for us? Till now?
Um, I think the credit card, the credit card, I'm pretty sure when I looked today, it had like a hundred fifty five thousand. And, uh, the re- water revenue is a hundred fifteen, I think. Now, I might be off a little bit there, that's, that's out the top of my head.
To the payment, yeah?
Less still better than-
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Fifteen hundred dollars or negative.
Oh, yeah.
Or return check fees.
Yeah.
So in this-
Any of them that does.
This reimbursement, fifty dollars in that.
So that need a motion to approve.
Yeah, cause it's, it's really good. What is?
It's the boots or something like that, it'd be my guess.
And boots would be more than all of it.
Be more than fifty dollars. But if it pulled you back boots online, pays for it, we improve it.
Management, be, Andy and Donna with water loss report.
Both fifties for January, so I'm wondering, are they, are these the same?
No, it's a different account.
Yeah, one's sitting in the income, is it reimbursement, and the other one's sitting in the expense. So she's gonna look, look them up and see, and now, we'll see if they let you know.
Yeah, we'll see if they, I wanna know my side.
Well, yeah.
We're gonna have to reimburse you for something.
No?
There's more fifty dollars out.
Yeah, that was in our payroll, is that our payroll?
That one fifty dollars is what.
Let's see.
Yeah.
Didn't y'all re- reimburse the customer?
Oh, yeah.
I had something to reimburse, did you reimburse the customer?
That's probably-
Did you reimburse a customer that you took too much out of a credit card or something like that?
That's the one I was saying, babe.
So that wouldn't be that?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
It's probably gonna show up on the, one I printed off under October, that, that was in the beginning, I can't remember when we did that.
Okay.
But that would've come out of, um, or when we would've transferred, um, the lot.
Ms. Brenda, before you go, how do you think that, uh, they're doing it for us overall now, compared to what you first started?
Well, um, I mean, the bills are pretty much being kept current.
It's a good thing.
And the expenses are-
How long's it been since you seen that? How long's it been since you seen that, ma'am?
That was our goal.
A long time. Was.
Yep.
And, you know, there's positive balances in the bank accounts, except, you know, the one account that shows the negative, there's a bunch of outstanding checks. You know, that you've sent out for deposits and still hanging around up there. But, yeah, so I, I think it's a hundred thousand.
Okay. Good.
This is checks.
Is anybody else got any more questions for Brenda? Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you.
And I just wanna throw out there that, um, the direct audit report came back, you know, and we'll be working with, um, Andy and Donna tomorrow to get responses, and so we'll have, stuff to go on that.
Okay. Thank you. Next is, management review, Andy and Donna.
The water loss, water loss was not particularly, we, 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 we have six forty six right now. Getting the way to bring it down slowly, I mean, we're trying to get back to change the meter, but I don't have any time. Uh, we're starting to get caught back up on a meter since I think we got five, maybe six left to do.
Uh, they've got the paper there. Time for you to say, bye.
We'll get caught back up, my third was one day I had a COVID, he said, "Change it," that's what he did all that, he said, "Change it," I hear him help. But when we get caught back up, we're gonna sit back on that. If you're upset, change all of these.
How many meters you say we got to change?
I mean, we got left.
How many, how many we have, do you think we gotta, we gotta change out?
I mean, do you think we have to change out?
Yeah.
It's over ten years old, that was the goal, wasn't it?
Yeah, how good is these others? Probably fifteen hundred. My, I don't even bet, my capital, about three hundred of water to change, right at three hundred to change.
We got to do that. But they're finished.
I would say twelve, fifteen hundred, they put all together, the change.
These work orders completed here, it's got employees done, or is that what they completed through? What, for September?
Yeah.
Well, you have a percentage out there.
Just a percentage.
Let's make this plain again on this, the water losses due to all the breaks.
Highway, highway eleven sixty two.
Well, that ain't a percentage, that's total.
Yeah.
The one at Ezel too, was that in on this?
See, I did it, started in July, and it didn't notice. Now, it's hope start back. So this is just the percentage. And it's like, as this is.
I don't understand that, but I was-
Y'all must separate, Joe.
Or now we're here, the total is, it's like forty eight.
Well, that's what I'm saying, forty eight, and that's somebody else got forty eight, that's over a hundred percent.
A little dark, baby.
Yeah.
We had six new savings for the month of September, is that correct? From what I can hear.
That it came in a favor, like we said.
It looks like they're done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're hearing more about that mission.
I called the man, uh,
It's four.
He's in back there hours, and I phoned that night, he texted me back, he said that he was out on his trip, that he called me six more, he never left there. I called back three times.
Which one do you see it completed?
Right here, you first see it. But, see what's right here, where it says work order's completed, see that?
Mm-hmm.
But, it doesn't show much, it would be nice if they had a certain, you know, savings.
Where's, where do you see the, see that on there?
There you go. You're assuming, because it says, you know, new savings, that better say it.
So.
It was actually four savings for September.
These ones you're on the new savings, Andy? You got like three hour sixty, is that the ones that's done been set?
Mm-hmm. To set them in.
So these, these are all being set?
Yeah.
Uh, we, we, well, check, so that's gonna show somewhere. Yeah, I'll give, give, will be thirteen forty, a thousand three hundred forty. Which I think I saw that somewhere. What did I say that?
Okay.
Donna, you have anything?
The only thing, I just wanna know if all of you is gonna be candid in this training.
Donna?
Uh, this is for a second.
Okay, yeah, so we're all going.
I am depending on, you know.
Hey, you're going, we don't care if they took a kidney or not, we're going.
I'm pretty the fact of a walker, though.
Well, the deadline for, the deadline for the registration is November tenth. And I know that's probably the same day as when we, our next board meeting, so I need that.
But before we leave here, if she trains that day, do y'all wanna postpone the meeting so we don't have to call special call meeting until the next week?
No, she's just saying the next meeting would be after she-
No, this is, this is a deadline.
The deadline to register.
I have to, the deadline to register.
And she would have to-
Their training ain't till December second.
Right.
So that's a six hour training we all.
Yes.
Yeah.
So do y'all want me to go ahead and, or you want me to give it a little bit before I?
Honestly, I would probably do it either, if you're good.
Before it gets filled up? Since it's life's training to be-
Yeah.
Okay, we'll wait after, like, the first week?
Cause by doctor, Friday, that will be on up short.
Okay.
Yep. And then we have.
Anybody else got any questions for Donna or Eddie?
Is this, this different from what Brenda gives us?
Uh, that's-
That's, that's-
That brought it down by the best part of it.
See, next is employee handbook policies and procedures. First reading.
Well, due to my brother dying, I did not get to finish typing them out, so hopefully, maybe tonight I can start back on that.
Ellen, did you copy? Not, cause we had all those together, and I wasn't sure what was.
Yeah.
I read them again.
Right.
What is this?
Renew property law. And. International statements, this is the draft for December twenty twenty-four, for the year twenty-four. While we have that.
Yeah. What is this? What is this, Donna?
Uh.
Who's that?
That is the audit.
Okay.
The draft of our twenty twenty-four audit.
How did, is it done?
Uh, yeah.
Have you heard anything about the audit?
Uh, we gotta wrap it up hopefully tomorrow.
Yeah.
You got it right there, brother.
This?
Yeah.
I'll give you something to read after.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you all like planning on coming up here and presenting at the meeting?
When everything gets finalized, they are gonna come up to the board meeting and they're gonna go through everything, so we can talk to them later.
Was that helpful, whether or not it was on next year?
What's next?
See, next payment, right?
Anything else on that?
You have that, there's a.
This is special coming.
You know, we gotta answer questions tomorrow.
So questions on this, on the draft?
Yeah. Or response.
I've got most of the cases, but I don't feel bringing them on and there's stuff that I can't make sure because I want to get information, so it's a little heated off the left side. I have no water loss number in January one twenty-fourth, August twenty-fourth.
Bro.
Brenda said we can work.
You agree?
Are they gonna be up there tomorrow? To do this? Just Brenda, more? What time is she coming? Sure clock?
It's six thirty-eight.
I know, but.
I wish I missed out a little.
Yeah.
Yeah. It goes to six.
Well, it's, it's what's probably the Debbie nine for.
Uh.
The rest is just at Debbie nine.
You see, next is renew property law and payments of interest.
You got one?
Renew property law and payments of interest.
Yeah. Have, have we, have we heard anything, Chris, from Frankie, Mr. Spencer, the realtor?
They did get the lot cleaned up.
Jim, don't you need that lot? For something? For parking? Tenolda said parking. She's crazy.
We may rent it out for food church or something.
I'm letting it out there.
Something, make money with it.
She could do it.
So we need approval to.
Give you the same amount.
Guess not.
To pay, to pay.
Yeah.
Thirty, so I'm sure she can get that.
Wow, I didn't know that.
How much is the interest coming on the property, do you know?
Uh, it's over seven thousand.
We just say get that paid off, something on that. That's, that's a waste of money. You remember the sugar.
Is that once a year?
Well, we ain't paying a dime on it.
Well, you paid nothing on it.
I know, but I was just.
Well, I mean, if you start paying on it, the interest will be low.
Yeah, well. Maybe that's gotta work.
Can we work on the, try to maybe get that paid off after this January payments? First year payments?
Yeah, we can start. Everything goes like it's going.
Well, we open it.
You know, you, you never know what kind of winter you're gonna have. You know, a winner can put a damper on it, which.
How about two of these, did you get one of them?
I think. Right now, the one for five is the one. She was one, we actually, can actually use them as three hundred dollars for one regular, they go to one big place. I'm hoping though that. We can get a better deal on them coming in by, per the quality of the stuff, that three hundred dollars, and that's not can't be that, cause that's just more to recognize. You're looking at two of that, or the gas is going, you're looking at. In between three hundred eighty and four hundred dollars for one dealer, maybe the one that's gonna fit in there.
Do we have to do the regulators or the customer does?
The ones we have that have already got them are grandfathered in, and in order to change it, we have to continue to service the ones that've already got them, but. You all can add it to the tariff, that's from, you know. This point on, if we can customize, honestly, those dollars in your house.
So what's your opinion on that?
I think we would have a customer sell them as well, the city whistle, I mean, at my house, I've got one, but I haven't put any under my house. We would save money on the ceder, if they're single, straightening line ceder, if there's no man, if you don't have a nest to, you've got a check value shut off and your meter, that's it. So we would save money on the ceder and then afford them on the regulator.
Well, just one day last week, we went out and bought six, we had to change six with eight, but within one day. You think four hundred of these, that's.
Thirty-two hundred dollars.
Yeah.
And see, every new, and every new weird city we're doing, we have to buy a lot, right now, we have to put them in.
So with what money we spent on the interest, we could have bought eight or sixteen of them.
Yeah.
But we do need a motion for the interest in the.
Are we still putting money in emergency fund?
I haven't put any more in. In a while, I told y'all last time I put some in, but I'll start starting today.
Yeah, if the winter's coming up, you got me scared enough.
Well, I'll make a motion to, uh, pay the interest and renew it. Throw the lot on, if anybody's interested, give us a call.
I'll second your motion, will you?
Motion made, probably second, to renew property laws and payment of interest. Any further discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Uh, next is the adjournment, the next meeting date will be.
November tenth.
November tenth.
I'll make a motion that will adjourn this meeting? For October the twentieth, twenty twenty-five.
And do you want, do you want to run the office, like getting one? And tomorrow?
Jim's got, you have a copier in there?
Yeah, well, no.
I didn't know if it's here or the wellness.
Does the service office got one?
They do, but he can't have a copy.
We can leave it at that.
It's a dollar.
Dollar?
It's a dollar.
When does this have to be turned in?
Here, who, who doesn't have one?
Me.
Here, William, you know what? I got a printer set up, I can print out my own Debbie nine and I can email it to Donna.
Well, I've gotta be going on Friday tomorrow, or I would come up there.
No, you're good.
I thought I had enough thirty-nine.
I've been doing taxes.
Somebody wanna second?
I make a motion to adjourn.
No, I made the motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion being made to adjourn, all in favor, or any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?